Was the drop program and that program was voted out of existence. That program would allow teachers to stay in education longer. Any kind of raise that was given teachers would not have been granted to the people in the drop program. And it would save the state money and our S.A. program money. And so, we just have to look for other solutions. And I don't know what those solutions are, but I'm always willing to look for solutions and talk to people, be accessible, and I'm gonna learn as I go along. And just like Senator Busman has done, you know, we all begin at a place where we're not familiar with things and we have to work hard and that's what I would do.
Let me step in, let me ask you this question first because you've kind of already alluded to it a little bit. An emphasis on recruiting and developing a high skilled workforce is a challenge facing economic development in Alabama. In order to prepare people for high paying, quality jobs within the state's manufacturing industry, we must continue educating workers with particular trade skills. Dodge City is now open for business. We're ready to grow and we want people to work here and we want them to live here. The Dodge City Merchants Group is willing to work with educators, elected officials, such and such, and other potential businesses to operate as a team to recruit these jobs. Public and private entities, they were used in Mobile with Airbus. It's proven that it can work through that partnership. We ask you here to build a relationship with each one of the candidates. Now that you've become familiar with the Dodge City Merchants Group, would you use our group as an asset towards driving economic development here at Dodge City when dealing with some of these other companies?
Yes, as a community and as an organization, you would need to have an aggressive recruiting position and have your properties ready to accept new business. And you would also need to have skilled workers. Without skilled workers, you're not going to be able to recruit the businesses that you need to come into your community. And like I alluded before, our trade schools need upgrading. I think it's been probably 10 or 12 years since we've had the kind of upgrades that we need in our trade schools. And a lot of our skilled workers are leaving the state of Alabama for other states where, you know, they have the opportunity to have the kind of jobs that would make a good living for them and their families. So, I think it's very important to have everything in place as far as your recruiting and everything.
Thank you. I think one of the most critical things that we can do is to provide education for our kids where they can be employable when they grow up and get out of school. And so, for the last four years, Representative Buttram and I have worked very hard to provide career tech training. Career tech is the key, in my opinion, to getting these kids employed and to making sure that we have, when you have your car companies, when you have your Airbus, when you have your companies coming in here like Topray and Rayhawk, these people have got to be trained in a certain way. And so, our goal over the last four years is to provide as much technical training as we can get. And we've pushed budgets every year to make sure that we fund technical programs. We put more money in the budget this time for technical programs. It's so critical that these kids come out employable. I think for so long, we've tried to shove all kids into a college fund and we said, "All right, everybody's going to college." And so, we kept shoving them in this fund. Well, there's a bunch of kids that don't want to go to college. They are skilled laborers. They can make $70,000, $80,000, $90,000 a year with a trade. And so, we need to start educating the kids in high school. We need to show them the opportunities that they have. And unfortunately, that's one place I think we failed because we have not shown our high school kids what the opportunities are, what the opportunities are for gainful employment, and what the income can be if you choose to go down that road. So, I think the main thing that we've got to do is we've got to educate our kids. I think as far as the Dodge City Merchants Association, anybody that wants to work together is always a good thing. When you have companies coming to these areas looking for places to build, if you've got a united community, you've got a company that's interested in coming. And I think that's why Coleman County has done so well because we're very united, we know exactly what we want, and we know exactly how to get it and we're very good at it. And so, those are the things I think are critical for us to make sure that we continue to do. The Duck River is one of those things that's critical for that. You look in Atlanta, you look in the areas of Georgia, they have no water left. They can't draw industry without having a water supply. And so, what I've done over the last two years, I've traveled to Washington more than three times on my own dollar to go up and talk to our representatives to make sure that we have funding coming to help do that. I've talked to the poultry industry. We're looking at incentive packages for the poultry industry in case the costs go real high. We cannot lose the poultry industry in this district. And so, I fought very hard for that and have worked with the poultry industry to try to come up with incentives to allow them to function without costing them a tremendous amount of money. That's one of our key industries in Coleman is poultry. We cannot let that go.
If there's no objection, I'd kind of like to open up the floor. I think there's some people here that may have a few things that they just want to throw out there that might be of interest to them. I will remind everybody that as long as it's somebody in this room, let's talk to them about what your question is. If it's somebody that's not in this room, let's just let it be, okay? County commissioners, anybody have questions for county commissioners? Go ahead.
This is for the county commissioners. Is it not the policy, the opening job of the county, was just the open for seven days a day? Or anybody want to give a comment before it's opened to the public? Does it require cost of practice?
Seven days or...
Seven. That was a pass policy.
You're still working at the Brandon, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
You don't need a candidate. Everybody in the county would be disappointed if they wasn't Brandon. I got you.
We actually have HR personnel handling all the hiring and bidding process now. All things that we do now, once you make the recommendation, it's very easy.
Matt's here, Mike is not. I think Tim left. Is Tim, did he leave?
Yeah, he had appointments.
Yeah, I think Tim had appointments. Just out of curiosity, in working with the sheriff's department, what are the few of the things that you feel like needs to either change or be addressed when you go into office and potentially a new sheriff comes in and that kind of thing? Do y'all have anything you might want to allude to on that? Because I've heard some stuff. I'm just curious if there was anything that you knew that was just present.
The county commission provides sheriff's budget if you make the decision like us. So, we don't really have any authority to dictate what the sheriff does.
Is the budget that, how much does that budget fluctuate for the sheriff kind of year to year or does it stay about the same basis each year?
It stays about the same.
Go ahead.
For the three, the two sitting there. I'm there with, there is a couple local farmers who've got a lot of concerns about the water. We tend to sit in the Catbird Sea, the VAW because we also purchase water from the East Tennessee River, which y'all know. Okay. It's man and for Darryl and Stanley, especially if, you know, mayor's made in the past been concerned that we're not either not educating the community enough or can you tell us now because this has been an ongoing debate? I don't know if I have that. The actual cost though, I'm not opposed to, you know, secondary water source having a need, but when it started out, and this was, it started when I'm still upstate, but 2010, when I made the legislature, the estimate was $69 million. Okay, is that a merit assessment that at the time was $69 million? Now we're seeing as $110 million. But from what I've read, it's still not clear. Can you tell us where we're at, the cost estimate and the impact, not just to the city, but the county? Because like I said, the VAW, I've talked with board director several times, is kind of sitting in the Catbird Sea that was closed by our contract, not also with the county, but also with Tennessee River, the East Orange and West Morgan Water Authority, that we have the option of offering water at a cost less than the county's. I'd like to know, what can we expect as a citizen for our water bills down the road?
And I encourage any of you that want to take the mic, just come up and feel free to participate in this. Don't feel like you're going to be called.
Some of the fears that I've seen based on estimated costs now, $3 to $5.
Say it again.
$3 to $5 per month on average, minimum bill.
For a year or for two years or...
A month.
I understand that, but how long until the course of the bond issue is to be paid off? Is that all it's gonna be from now to the next 30 years, greater than that?
Well, no. The cost of producing water is you want to continue to drive.
I understand that. I understand that.
You can't say that it's gonna be X amount of dollars for the next 30 years.
I understand that, but I'm still getting back to my point. Is there a level to where we know, as county water producers, that we pay the bill, that we know what the cost is gonna be a little better because I've seen it fluctuate so much there?
Well, I just hope $3 to $5 is figured that I've been doing.
For how long?
Yeah, that...
$5 for six months or is it gonna go for a year?
$3 to $5 added on to...
I know, but you're not asking the long term. What he wants to know is the long term. What is the long term for it? Well, it might be $3 to $5 now, but a year from now, is it gonna be another $10 on the $3 to $5? You know, it's gonna continue to go up higher and higher and higher.
I've managed water systems for 17 years and changes every year.
Colonel, I was gonna say, can the city still do that? They do it once a year. They evaluate the cost for that average out of the water some spring.
They take whatever the cost to produce the water and it's divided by the number of gallons sold and that's what we pay for wholesale rate.
What's the general criteria?
One thing, it would greatly, greatly reduce the cost if everybody in Coleman County got on board with this and every water system purchased all their water. More water you, it's sold, cheaper it is.
I was in the culture business. I disagree with that.
Oh, yeah. More water sold, cheaper it is.
That's why again I said, Darryl, the VAW is kind of sitting in the Catbird Sea and I don't want to turn this into a mess, but the cost comparison with what we get out of the Tennessee River, which we do.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a difference and I guess that's the concern is that through the course of years, like she said.
Well, you have, VA doesn't really have a little advantage over the rest of the county because you can purchase a little water. There's no way we could ship that over the county.
Can I ask you what the difference is in the water system on the east side? Because I've lived in Thinko for years and when I moved to the west side, my water bill extremely changed. Where does the system east side get their water from?
City of Coleman.
Well, why, I mean, I couldn't believe the difference when I actually relocated.
Higher over there?
No, it was cheaper.
Well, I don't know, they buy water.
Don't ask me why, but it was cheaper. It was cheaper. And then when I moved to the west side, it was, I was like, kidding?
There's about 67 water systems. They're each independent.
Yeah.
Maybe some manage better than that. That goes back to my question.
I don't know. I was just shocked at the difference in my bill.
Maybe that goes back to the statement I made earlier, the only way to maintain water is make sure that Coleman County water system is operated very efficiently. I've managed water out there or have in the past, I don't know, but we have to choose rates in the county. We just didn't spend much money. So, you know, these water systems have got to be as efficient as they can.
I just wondered what the difference was, you know?
It's strictly set up by each water board.
Is it the Duck River, the Duck River Project dot org or dot com, I believe, that you can get to, has everything pertaining to the water, has the breakdown of like all the different water systems throughout the county? And there's a ton of information on it. I mean, I spent two hours looking at that one website. I believe it's Duck River Project and I think it's, I think it's run through city economic development. Is that correct?
No. Well, they may have put the website up, but you know, one thing about it, I think they've been very open, you know, what they do. Utility Board has been very open and let people know exactly, you know, what's going on. There's no secrets. They have nothing to hide.
You can get to that website from the city of Coleman, their website, or the economic development, or even the utilities board. It's out there. People want to know the answers. There's lots of stuff on the internet.
That's extensive. Anybody else want to comment on?
I believe, I believe what your question was is the increase of water rate and I think I understand it a little better, not better than Darryl, but I think I understand what you want to know is what is the cost of the $3 to $5 increase on the water bill that's going to pay for the bond debt? You know, and we all know material for treatment or treating the water or to push the water through the county system or out into the county, you know, over the years it will have an increase. It won't have that big of an increase, but it will have an increase. How much, you know, I don't think I'm supposed to say a year. But on the county level, you know, the city has done pass two water rates off on the county and the county has resorted to not pushing down the customer. And on the county part, we're gonna do that as long as we can, but eventually, you know, we're gonna have to start pushing our increases there. That's how, that's I can best explain it to you.
Thank you. Is that good? Yeah. Okay. I mean, we still don't have a dollar figure. Of course, I know you can't predict.
Can't predict that.
Yeah.
So, let me ask you about the thing that they got. I got a thing in the mail saying they're trying to, like, is it next month?
That's VAW.
Yeah. So, but it's not Coleman County, so it goes through?
VAW is a different system than Coleman County. They get their water, 80% of the water from East Morgan West, not from, 20% from. I got a VAW, I own a VAW water system, I have a blind mine. Also got a place near Shelton Grove. Place at Shelton Grove is on the county water system. It's probably $10, $15 a gallon cheaper than the VAW.
Now you know how I feel from the eastern west side. Yeah.
Most of the county, is that correct, is gonna be basically Dodge City, Hansville, and then towards the lake, is that the majority of it?
Actually, we don't, we don't see it.
They have. Anybody have any more questions for county commissioners? If not, if you've got anything for Paul or Bruce, feel free to step up and ask them a question. This is an easy group right here, isn't it?
Hey, I work with education too.
Well, you're the junior for the sheriffs right now.
Yeah.
That's all I got to say.
I'm just, I just want to say that I'm glad they've tried to do something to help us with the healthcare, but I'm support personnel. I'm a manager in a lunchroom. And we, up until I took the manager's job this year, last year, I was bringing home less money. I was making more money, bringing home more money five years ago than I was last year up until I took this manager job, which I didn't get much of a raise. I'm still poverty level. But, you know, I just want to thank you for not going up on our interest, but I wish, you know, 1% or half a percent or something for $10,000 is, you know, it's, everything goes up so high and not only the teachers, but the support personnel. There's so many people, the support personnel, the janitors, and the lunchroom ladies, and the bus drivers that make very, very little money and the health insurance is the only thing we have to look forward to.
I'm gonna address that really quickly. You know, that was what we heard from the teachers that I talked to and the teachers that talked to me. Don't hurt our health insurance. They would rather have the health insurance than they would rather have a parent. When we're gonna be physically responsible like we need to be, then we have to make choices like that. Now, I can tell you right now, next year's gonna be worse than this year. We have one more bad year before we get to the growth year, okay? I'm telling you that right now. And so, as long as y'all understand that, that we're working as best we can with what we have to work with. You know, the economy's got to turn around. We're still flat. We were, we were a billion dollars more in 2008 than we are in 2014. We've lost a billion dollars in income, in revenue, and so, you know, we've got to be very careful how we distribute that money. And so, we're trying to do it as best we can without hurting anybody that we can't hurt. We understand that and, you know, it bothers me that people just say that we don't care because I do care. You know, when people, when I know that people don't get raises that deserve raises, no different than state employees, you know, they deserve raises.
The big thing to me is, you know, on the manager's side now, I know that my workers don't make as much as I do and if they continue to go up more and more on their insurance, they're gonna say, "I'm just spinning my wheels in one place. I can really afford the government insurance that they're forcing everybody to take if you don't have it and sit home."
I don't know if that's the case.
I don't know.
If that's the case.
I've seen too many of them get, you know...
The primary thing that we try to do is to give you the best insurance that we can buy. And that's, we could go in and start saying, "Well, let's raise deductibles, let's do this, let's do that, let's reduce the coverage a little bit."
Well, I've done that.
Well, I know. We are doing as much as we can to not let that happen. And so, my goal to you is we're gonna do everything we can. And when we have the money, there will be no question, there'll be raises given, but we've got to have the money to do that. The problem we don't want to get into, before we came into office, we had proration every year before we got there. And what people don't understand about proration is in February and March, when the governor has to declare proration and he declares it at 10, 12, 14%, they've got to carry that back all the way through the whole school year. That is devastating in the classroom. All right, so what we're having to do, we have agreed that we're gonna stay in the base. We're gonna have a non-proration budget. We're not gonna raise taxes and that's what we've done. But unfortunately, like I said, we got one more year. And I try to tell everybody that so they understand where we are financially with the state. We get through this next year, then the average goes up a little bit and we have more money to spend and I feel very comfortable with that than no raise will come. The other problem we've got is the state employees don't have a chance to get pay raise. They never, they don't have a chance. There's no money in the general fund to give them a pay raise for, as far as I can see. And so, we've got to figure out a way to compensate them because it's not fair to compensate one group of state employees and not compensate the other group of state employees. And so, it's a balancing act that we have to do and we take a lot of heat for it, but I can tell you that the delegation that's down there right now is trying to do everything we can as fair as we can make it and take care of as many people as we can take care of our employees.
Is common court over with or not?
It says never be over. Got a long window.
I wanted to ask Mr. Busman, what can we do about, you know, how they've got it where in Alabama, they don't have to have a reason to fire you? How can we change that? I don't think that's fair to the families that have children and such.
You also have to understand that we are a right to work state. That draws tremendous industry into Alabama. None of our car companies would be here. Airbus would not be here. I'm sure Topray and Rayhawk will probably not be here. We are right to work state. That attracts industry because industry wants that. I don't think you're gonna see, you know, you will have examples of abuse, but for the most part, I think you're gonna see good quality employees trying to keep people hired and provide them with it.
Okay, thank you. For Chris, do you have anything you want to add?
As far as our educational system and raises for teachers and sport personnel, that is a big problem. We need to cut government waste for one thing. Our educational trust fund, we need to stop taking money out of it, out of it as intended for education and use it for other reasons and other organizations. And if you'll look at the state budget, not enough money to give raises to teachers have come out of that, but we've got money that's going to the Spring Court Library, Burnham Tourism Council, probably a half a million dollars to those two just by themselves. And that money was put into the educational trust fund for education and that's where it needs to be spent. As far as the question about being able to fire you for no reason, and we are a work state and that does bring industry here, I don't think we'll see very many abuses from that at all. And there are options that you have for unreasonable fires.
Is there anybody else?
I have a very good question today. Question is, Caribbean Chrome, you've got a very large budget for, you say 49 million?
49.3, I believe.
Yeah. My first election to vote in, I'd like to vote for, I guess, two of you guys. But like, tell me your experience with managing money of that gravity and that size. So, we phrase that again. Tell me what your experience is with working with that much money put in, we're supposed to pay, put in budgeting that kind of dollars.
If you don't mind, use the mic so that you can hear you...
Anybody from Ticker?
Aja, if you don't mind.
I think the youngster's calling you out.
Our expense working with the county budget, or county budget, county revenue budget is, we have a county administrator, we have, I believe it's 50, I believe 52 entities that we fund. You know, we fund everything on the United Way up. That county administrator, we go through the budget dollar for dollar. And if we take out one, you know, if we increase one budget or one department, we're taking it from somewhere else. And then, you know, at the end of the day, we've got to balance that budget. And we also have to, when we're done with it, we have to figure out, are we gonna be able to pull a bit back for 90 days? So, we work real, and you're gonna have a good commission to do that. I mean, you can't have one commission sitting there saying, "Oh, we need to give a library another $10,000, $30,000." Who are we gonna take it from? another ten thousand, thirty thousand, who's going to take the front? That's how we do it. Thank you.
Most of you know, even if, as far as your own personal income.